Good evening, calling school committee to order Thursday, January 12, 2025, 6:30 PM. First item is the statement regarding recording.
Good evening, this meeting will be recorded and will be posted to YouTube and other social media platforms. By participating in this meeting, you understand that the recording could contain your video stream or your audio stream, including images of yourself or anyone in the room with you if you choose to enable your video or audio device during the meeting, as well as anything or anyone else that may be in the background could be recorded. The recording could include any opinions you contribute and anything you say about yourself. On occasion, chat within the meeting could also be captured in the meeting recording. Therefore, anyone attending the recorded meeting may have aspects of their personal data recorded if they actively participate or not.
Thank you. Roll call for attendance, please.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yeah.
Ms. Mupp?
Here.
Mr. Wiggler?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson? Mr. Nutter?
Yeah.
Ms. LaRange?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Here. If my college school committee colleagues will approve, let's take an item out of order. We will go to the Student Advisory Council for the elementary report and middle high school report, and then the school committee student representative. Seeing and hearing, no objections, go ahead and do it. Okay, so let's just pretend it.
So Principal Worthington is here with several students and teachers from Okem Center School. They just finished, some of them, a very long hot day because we had our district-wide band concert. So they literally came from next door and zipped over here to join us, but Principal Worthington can...
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Trisha Worthington, the principal at Okem Center School in Brinkton Grade School. We do have a student that is on his way for the nature's classroom portion, so hopefully we'll talk long enough so that he'll be here for that. But first, I'd like to introduce my teachers, who I'm very proud of, that have come here tonight with some of the students. I have Maddie Parker, who is my third grade teacher, Cassie Bennett, who is my fourth grade teacher, and Karen Miller, who is my fifth grade teacher. Tonight, these students are going to talk about three different areas. Nature's Classroom, I think we come back and do that every year. My third graders are going to talk about, well, a PAWS program, which is a PBIS program that we do at Okem Center School. And then the fourth grade are going to talk about We Write. It's a program in addition to the writing process that we use in our writing at Okem Center School. It's from the curriculum, the Writing Rope, but they have found, the teachers have found this other program that students, it's kind of a type of writing for fun that students really enjoy doing and they have a great time. It's a little bit of a competition, so I'm not sure PAWS is first.
All right, I have two friends from class here today, can you all introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Kaylee, I'm in third grade and I'm from Okem Center School.
Hi, I'm George, I'm also from 3P and I am from Okem Center School.
All right, and we're going to be talking about our PBIS program, we call it PAWS at our school.
Every morning, we say the pledge of allegiance in our PAWS pledge. Please be respectful, always be kind, we are responsible, and stay safe.
Each class gets a PAWS card that can be filled out at recess special and given by teachers.
And how many PAWS points do you need to fill your card?
10.
10, and how many have we filled in third grade?
12.
Yep, we filled our 12th card today.
When we fill a class card, we can choose a class award, and we've done like awards like Have No Homework Day, Extra Recess. Well, there's more options, but that's all I can name. Eat with an invited adult.
Oh, that's for individual ones. And every time we fill a card, Mrs. Worthington actually announces it on the announcements for the whole school to hear as well.
Students can also fill individual cards from teachers. You can earn, you can earn when you do your homework and being respectful and responsible.
And Kiki, did you say students can recommend it too? Did I say that?
Yeah, and students can also recommend, kind of like if a student was being, following PAWS, they could tell a teacher or someone that works at the school that they were following PAWS and they can get a PAWS point.
And just like our class card, they each have to get 10 points before they cash it in for a reward as well.
We, we can like fill an individual card and we can like choose our award, like sit at a teacher's desk, steal a teacher's chair, steal a principal's chair, skip a class or help with your assignment. I have done Eat With An Invited Adult, sat at a teacher's desk, and steal a teacher, steal a principal's chair.
Popular one, do you want to say what you've done too?
Yes. I ate with my, I ate with my dad and my brother and I won from the prize from PAWS card and yeah, I helped in another class.
Which class?
Fifth grade, I helped in fifth grade.
Fifth grade was a very popular one for my class, at least. These are just some pictures from throughout the year of some of the rewards for the individual cards. So that first picture is a student cashed in to eat with an invited adult at lunch, and they love to bring in some special food, which they love it. Yep, we have principal's assistants, so you can tell they're actually on the phone doing the morning announcements.
Teacher's desk?
Yes, and that picture is Kiki in my desk, that was also a very popular one. And then...
Helped with another grade.
Yes, that last one's helping another grade, and those are actually siblings, so that was a very popular one too. So we also, as the PBIS team, it's actually the three of us that are here right now, we have been doing monthly assemblies and they have a theme that go along with them. Those four right there are kind of what PAWS is all about, but we also incorporated the themes that were in our agenda book. So there was different things like being thankful and gratitude. So we really tied in a lot of different aspects to it, and the students loved the assemblies, we made it really engaging. On top of that theme, we made a bulletin board that was very like interactive, students could add. For example, we just did one in the spring that was Plant Seeds Of Kindness and Watch What Grows. So every time a student was showing kindness, they could fill out a little flower with their name on it and put it up on the board. So that was really cool to see how many flowers ended up on there. And then this is a picture of one of our assemblies, if you want to share who's inside that panther costume.
This is Worthington.
Yeah, we love PBIS at our school and it worked really well this year. Right?
Yeah.
Nice job.
Very good. Dr. Allen?
Yeah, two comments.
Yes.
For your assembly, when I was a kid in elementary school, back a few years ago, we used to do music sometimes for Christmas. They'd have me come in and play music songs, play Christmas songs, or things of that sort. I don't know if that would work as a fun kind of thing.
Yeah, dance parties.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Third thing, this seems like a great feeder program, the kind of thing Luke Salvador is doing. Man, what a wonderful first step. I assume you all are familiar with his program.
We don't start that till high school.
Well, I know.
But it's, yeah.
But this program, I think, is a wonderful first step for the kinds of things he's doing. He has get up early, do your homework, 45 minutes of exercise, do something of kindness each day, somebody, and there's a fifth one, I forget how to do it. I always forget the fifth one, but those things, seems to me, what you're doing leads right into those. Very well, beautifully. So congratulations to you guys.
Any other school committee member?
I just want to mention that Kiki is Mirabelle's daughter.
And to the students that presented, did you have a good year doing this? And do you think that when you go to another grade, you'll become role models and help even further in helping in the PAWS program?
Yeah.
Both of you, yes?
It'll help us be, like following PAWS, I feel like it'll help us be like a better person.
Absolutely, those are fantastic core principles, responsibility, kindness, respect, and I believe safety. Yes. Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, so, um...
Want to introduce yourselves or do you have anything?
Okay, what's your name?
My name's Timothy Metterville and I'm from 4B and I go to Okem Center School.
My name's Liam and I'm in 4B and I also go to Okem Center School.
So we're going to be talking about this website called We Will Write. Writing is something that we have found throughout the years that students just don't really enjoy doing. So I came across this website on social media. And they kind of describe it as a social writing game, so it's collaborative, it's creative, it's supportive. It really lets kids kind of run with their imagination. If you go to the next slide, so this is kind of what it looks like. Pictures are projected up on the smartboard, and students have their own individual laptops, and they're given pictures and prompts. They are writing in short bursts, so really only two to three minutes to answer the question about one specific part of a story. Once the time is up, students vote for their favorite pieces of writing, but it's all anonymous, so they don't know whose is who, which is great. The most popular ones get put up on the smartboard, as you can see, it says the team's funniest text. And then if I were to click on it as the teacher, it kind of is a perfect teaching opportunity. So we talk as a class, what stands out, what did your classmate do really well? What is something that they could improve on? If you go to the next one as well. So I'm going to let the boys talk about this prompt that we did. This kind of ties in with our writing curriculum, the HMH curriculum and the Writing Rope. We were learning about fables and fairy tales, and so I found this one on the website, which tied in perfectly. So the boys got to take their responses from this piece of writing and turn them into fabulous stories. And this website really lets them kind of be more creative than just responding to text or, you know, like, like text evidence-based responses, things like that. All right, so do you guys want to kind of share out?
So we were in the, we were learning about fables and this story, so I wrote, I wrote a We Will Write and then I made it even better because we have like writing timed about it, and we like make them better than we had them in it. So this is mine. There is this house in the woods that is made out of candy. It smells like candy even from miles away. It smells like candy once you just open a new bag of candy, like a tropical rainforest if it had candy in it. This is where Hans lives, near his friend Emily, and they both love candy. Hans just came back from the house after being in the woods. He has one of the best noses in the world because he smells candy from miles away. His friend Emma, who is rich, like filthy rich, loves candy, but not as much as Hans does. Soon as Hans sees Emma with candy, he falls in love with the candy and goes faster than light and eats her candy, like faster than Usain Bolt, AKA the fastest man in the world. Hans has this mystery machine, the candy machine, let's just say the everything machine. Makes candy and everything he wants, any type of food, from candy to watermelon, fried chicken, sushi, anything he could think of. This machine has been around for 100 years now. It started to make a lot of noises and one day a big bang happened. And I guess the machine blew up with candy, watermelon, and his favorite stuff he loves. That's done, that's it.
This is mine and it's about the same like topic. The candy house in the forest is owned by the gingerbread man. It smells so strong that when he opens the door to leave his house, it smells like sugar in a candy shop. His house is surrounded by a bunch of lollipops and other candy. The house is so beautiful, it has a bunch of straight candy canes on the roof. Then the gingerbread man went to go see his friends, Mr. Pepper and Hans. They all have a great relationship. Hans has an unusual sense of smell, though. He always finds the candy and then eats it all up. The next day, Mr. Pepper, the lab worker, wanted to make some ideas, so he went to the junkyard and found some extra scraps. He used them to make a lot of ideas, the last idea left him speechless. It was Charlie's last idea. He made the world's greatest device, it was a cook-o-rama. He could cook anything he wanted. He wanted to. He could even make the world's most dangerous food, which is, which was puffer efficient. And the cook-o-rama made it perfectly. The next month, the gingerbread man came home to see his whole house was melted into pieces. It looked better than before, so he thought it was the best disaster ever. So he kept it and added a couple more candies and also dried the woklay because it was sticky. It was the best thing that ever happened to him. And...
So I just want to kind of go back to what Tim had mentioned earlier. Because they're only given a short amount of time to write, they might not get all of their thoughts down on paper. So they're, they receive printed copies of their responses and then they can turn it into something great. Yeah, of course.
Like make it better than, a lot better than it was.
Yeah.
We did a lot more topics on just, um, fairy tales. Fairy tales from, and we did like this frog girl one.
Yeah, something about monsters.
Yeah, monsters.
Monsters. And what were you saying earlier, when it's time to write, you guys were saying like the whole room goes quiet.
Oh, yeah, as soon, like once we went with Ms. Kay's room and they came into Ms. Bennett's room and we were all together, as soon as that happened, it was like, it was super loud, it was like, it was like... All you could hear is the, the keys, the keys and the, especially the space button. For a second, I thought someone's keyboard was about to break, I'm not going to... And, yeah. Oh, and our score was like in the 1,700 words typed, and then we had like 146. 146 texts, yeah. And that was our high score, of course. I think we can get higher than that.
Anything else you guys want to share?
That was perfect. Any questions? Dr. Allen?
I don't see you doing this for that purpose, but I would think that this would have an effect on MCAS scores. And I know we didn't do that this year, or did we do it the wrong way? Yeah, so do you see any difference, Trish?
Well, not yet, when we get the scores, but I see a lot more writing going on in the classroom, which is really exciting.
Oh, yes.
The kids are enjoying it.
I think this is great for its own self, and not for that.
Yeah, I agree.
But that's a nice kind of feedback to the, to the strength of the program.
I agree. Walter?
Boys, as you're writing, do you find that like when you get going, it really, you kind of get on a roll or you get stuck or?
Well, it depends on the topic it's, you like bring, it depends how imaginative, imaginative you are. And if it's like not your topic, you can't really finish that one.
Yeah, yeah, but you get to finish later.
Yes.
And it also pops up with like a little screen that says like, did you do good? Did you like, was it not like, and then was it like?
Good. And then as you click on it, there's like, I did a good job, I finished before time's done, and something else. And once Ms. Bennett says, we're going to do We Will Write, everyone's not like, come on, come on.
Emily?
We just need to finish up that last one to take photos.
I mean Lisa?
Oh, Lisa. All right.
So what do you guys think? Do you think that you would like writing more before you started rewrite? Or do you think that rewrite has made you like writing more?
I like writing more, yeah.
Once again, perfect. Do you want me to introduce you?
Oh, you want me to introduce you? Okay, so we are going to talk tonight about our trip to outdoor classroom from, when did we go? May 27 through the 30th, and we go with Hardwick Elementary School as well. So I have Parker Ash and Ashton Nance, who are going to tell you a little bit about our trip. Ready? Okay.
We go to Camp Oceanwood and Ocean Park name. Our site is very close to both the forest and the beach. Slide two, please. We stayed in this cabin, there were two to five students in each room. We had to take care of our belonging, be the, I don't know. We practiced being self-reliant, to be prepared for our activities. We had to get our backpacks ready for the next adventure at the appropriate times.
Slide three, please. At mealtime, we were responsible for our own tables. At each meal, one student at the table was a waitron. The waitron had to arrive early for meals. Each waitron had to set the table for the meal, get the food from the kitchen for the table, get seconds if they wanted, clear the table, and bring up the dirty dishes. The waitron then swept the floor and washed the dishes, I mean the table. Slide four, please. At the end of the meal, we got to go up in front and sing the ORT report. For the ORT report, we talked about food waste and how to lessen it. We also had entertainment, we did fun games like spoon chasting races that recycle.
Just a little note, Ashton was our winner of the spoon chasting contest.
Slide five, please. During our field groups, we explored the different ecosystems around camp. There is the beach, we went there every day to learn about the animals that live in water and sand. Another area was the frog pond. We were able to catch and learn about frogs and other aquatic plants and animals. The other areas were explored were a salt marsh and the forest. We even saw herons in the wild refuge and, refuge and, and eagle's nest.
Slide six, please. Every day, we were able to take two classes. There were five options each day. Some of the classes that we had to pick from were sandcastles, forest fires, forestry, mongoose, mongoose, little drifters, bridges, sheep eyeball dissection, water bottle rockets, outdoor cooking, wood carving, oil walls, and field germline.
Slide seven, please. At the, at the end of the day, we all met in the Little Red Schoolhouse for quite, quiet singing. This was a time to hear about what we would do the next day. We would sing a few songs together, get a snack, and then head off to our cabins for a good night's sleep.
Slide eight, please. This picture shows all the students from Okem and Hardwick that attended outdoor classroom that week. We had a great time, the food, counselors, and places we got to see were really awesome. We wish we could have stayed more.
Fantastic, and we'll see if there's any comments or questions from the school committee members. Dr. Allen?
Comment. We hear, oh, woe is us, we're teaching to the test. We hear, all of the kids are, look at this. This is just outstanding, social civil skills, improving writing, and the kids, I believe, are enjoying it and are learning their craft and are improving their craft. And the outdoors, the world around us, I don't want, I tell us about once a decade, of Trish. You know the story I'm going to tell, Trish? She was my son's special education teacher, back about 75 years ago, in Longmont Lane. And when he had to move on, he said, oh, no, Mrs. Worthington was the best teacher I ever had. And it's just wonderful to see that translating, transitioning into administrative kind of things. See, this, this is good education, this is really good.
Anybody else? I just want to compliment all the students. It can't be easy standing in front of us and, and talking, and you did a very good job. And I hope it builds up your confidence because you guys are really talented and you have a lot to offer. You should be very proud of yourselves. Good, good comment. Quick question on the evening, I see that you do on the ponds, the marshes, the challenges. Are you also able to look at the night sky and look at the stars or the moon? Or, I'm just curious, was there any activities for astronomy?
No.
Okay.
Unfortunately, not, because the counselors' day ends when we go off to bed, so...
Okay.
It's so late out, late now that it wouldn't be fair to them.
Yeah, 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 just... Because I know the mornings are packed and the different environments and different ecosystems are wonderful.
It would be great if we could, but unfortunately, the time limit.
Is there any, what was your best experience there?
The beach.
The beach.
Well, the beach and the cabins.
The cabins.
The bed.
Were the beds lumpy or hard or soft?
Soft. I would have preferred one with the bed was my favorite.
And then lastly, how was the food?
It was pretty good.
Yeah, the food was good.
It was decent.
All right, well, again, all of you deserve another... All right, well, again, all of you deserve another hand of applause. Well, the welcome to stay if you like, but it's okay, since you've had an action-packed day. And I know you want to get back to home. And the readers were wonderful. Were, I loved your pace, right? The pace was nice, no? Thank you. Thank you, parents.
Thank you. Yes, I love this. Come back again.
No, Emily sits right next to you. No, what?
Mark, Jason Bergman, and a couple of students are here for DECA, so they're just gonna move up front.
DECA?
Is on here too for the high school.
DECA's on deck.
Okay, DECA's on deck.
Yep, they're on.
I also have.
He's a, this isn't, this is a report out.
Okay.
That we asked for.
Yes, yes. Oh, oh, yeah, middle school, okay, that's coming.
High school, yeah.
All right, DECA report, turn it over to you.
Good evening, I'm Grace Nanna, I'm Quavon DECA's president. I'm here with Cam Robertson, our secretary.
Yep, I'm gonna go, um, I'm gonna be a junior at Quavon Regional High School this year, and I'm excited. This is gonna be my third year doing DECA, and I'm excited to show you what we've done this year.
So Quavon DECA's had a very successful past year, and I'd like to share with you some of their achievements. So first off, we had the Run for Kids 5K, and then following, we had our district competition. Then we had our state competition and the international competition, and then we had a craft fair fundraiser. So to start off with the Run for Kids 5K, this was Vice President Maddie Rigney and I's project. This was like a community service-based project. So we had to write a twenty-page paper, organize a 5K, and then do a fifteen-minute presentation at districts. So we decided to host a 5K to raise funds for UMass Memorial Children's Medical Center's child-life nonprofit organization, which basically provides crafts, toys, and games to children staying in the hospital for short and long periods of time. So this was a very, very successful event. We ended up having thirty participants, and we raised over a thousand dollars. This event really brought students, parents, teachers, and other community members together to support a notable cause. And then quickly following, we had districts.
All right, so this year, our districts was held at Nichols College, and we had a record thirty-eight students attend. Um, it was a very positive experience for everybody involved. This is the most I've seen involvement out of our group, because I've been here for two years, and it was much better at the Nichols Center, because at first it was held at the D C U Center two years ago, and it was very cramped, very crowded. But this very much boosted our student engagement, because when you go to districts, everybody has to pick event, event, whether it be a role play, a project, and, and you can choose to do this on your own or with a partner. And so this helps boost, um, our engagement with our members, and it also helps they, um, develop our minds, so we can, because this is a very long-term progress. We start planning for districts the year ahead, because we've started planning right now for the next district, that will also be held at Nichols College. My experience with the district event last year, it was very positive. It was very cold, so I'd say many people weren't prepared for the weather, which ultimately it was terrible, but, uh, but I think that it was a hit. There was a ton more engagement. Everyone seemed a lot more engaged this year. Everybody wanted to jump, and this district's also helped boost our attendance after districts ended. So with the success of this, it also helped bring the success of our oncoming events.
We're having a little technical difficulty calling the help desk.
Questions about districts? Uh, does anyone have any questions about districts?
Yep.
Yeah, mine's more a comment. I first encountered DECA under the stairs.
Yeah.
By the gym. You were selling food kind of things.
You name it, we got it.
I didn't name it, I bought it. And I think you had seven members at that point. They invited me to come in and talk with a couple of them, Luke and, um.
Maybe Landon, Riley.
What, oh.
Landon, Landon had gone on, actually, his little white loss was here, Landon Strasnis.
Yeah, okay. And while at the, in the, the middle state, you know, Augusta County, whatever, went to the states, and a couple of people went to the internationals down in Florida.
Our first year.
Yep, how many went to Florida this year?
We had another group go this year, and, um, we have, uh, Luke Salvador and Quinn Jerry, and then we have some slides to talk about that as well. But yeah, we.
Those slides, I might have to look at.
So the two, two of them, they.
It's very technical, I had to turn the tape.
So, for international, if you want to skip ahead real quick, I can talk about that. Come back and talk about some of those questions. Um, so, here are you, you created a project, um, or a business really, uh, called Me and Thirty, uh, that, that's been very successful. I'm, I'm sure many of you have heard about it at this time. Um, they marketed it, uh, all over now, the country and internationally. Because they were able to go down to this conference, international conference in Florida. Luke, Luke first started it four years ago when he was a freshman, and I know he didn't have a ton of success. And then his sophomore year, he, you know, he kept thinking about it, and then he brought his best friend Quinn in on it. And then their junior, they did an integrated marketing campaign, which is what Cam is thinking about, or what Grace is thinking about doing next year, um, which really skyrocketed them in terms of, they went from districts to the state level, and they had some great experiences talking to business owners across the country. Um, and so then this year, they said, well, we really want to get it going, and, uh, they graciously, the school accepted, uh, and they were able to pilot their program in the high school, which was very successful. Once again, we, uh, we have data that they were able to track from the students. Um, I mean, there's gonna be hiccups in every program, but it's great that their, their students able to put forth a real business idea in a school and then market it. And what they've done now is incredible. So now they've been out and they've talked to other superintendents, um, you know, calling, calling schools, meet and greets with people, and, uh, they're selling their products. They're gonna, they're gonna be in a business. They're gonna sell what they made in DECA, and they're gonna make a little bit of money, and that's a wonderful thing. And they're, it's, but the bigger point here is, is what they did is gonna save lives. They're very, very impactful, as the hair stands on, on the back of my neck. Luke told me the story, and I'll let Luke tell that to you, but he was impacted by someone, and that's why they created this. And very simply, when Luke and Quinn at States this year stood in front of a woman, another school superintendent, and she, she fell into tears, and she said to them at the end, you're gonna save a lot of lives with this program, and I like to run it in my school. So it was tremendous. That was the first real group of people that came through. I'm so happy I had the experience as, as my first year here was the first year we started DECA. And three years now have, have gone by, and we have tremendous students. And those students were able to build what we now have. So Grace and Cam cannot talk to you guys about the rest of everything else that we've been doing. I hope that answers everything, sorry.
Yeah, it's really the start of business thinking.
Absolutely.
I mean, you think about business courses, that, okay, that's mechanical skills. But succeeding in business is mental, it's vision and implementation and collecting data. As I used to say, in marketing, it's like stiffing down rapido, and you go as far as you can, when you, you, you go happy, you go down another one. And that's what these kids are doing, and it's come to Dr. Lee since a, a few times, and he called me yesterday, as a matter of fact, uh, above this with some questions. You can't teach this. You can't teach this. It can be experienced, it can be learned, it can be internalized only by doing and trying and experimenting and listening to trends and fears, which really is the basis of that E3 program.
Yep.
Is a greater business.
I agree, and, and I'll tell you that DECA does exactly what you're doing, uh, what you're saying, Dr. Allen. You know, DECA, the reason why, when I was asked, what can we start? My first year was, hey, let's bring DECA. You know, this is something new. Have I done it yet? No, but I was going to at my last school. So then when I came here and you have students like these, and everyone else has been part of the program, so it really takes you to another level because of those real-world experiences that we're having. You know, the real conversations you have outside of the school, or, or the Zoom meetings that we had during, you know, in between their classes, and that they have to cram into the school store real quick and talk finance with a finance operations manager, who's gonna fix their one slide, so they're gonna do a little bit better. You know, you're right, they, every single student has gained because now they're go-getters. You know, they're gonna go and get what they deserve the rest of the year and the rest of their lives.
Exactly. Rest of their life, yeah, and he's gone from what, seven, from three years to thirty-seven?
Uh, thirty, thirty-eight competed, but we have forty-two there, uh, forty-two. So our, our, our membership was, uh, the highest it's ever been. You know, we received like a three hundred percent of, uh, growth award. And, you know, the, and now, now it's, we're at a point where we're looking at quality. You know, we, we're, we're trying to do everything that DECA has to offer. So every year, I try to come up with a plan, and then our president, secretary, and vice president, and everybody gets together, and we talk about what we're gonna pursue the next year.
I give you, uh, thank you for being patient, both of you, and being flexible. Um, so is this your first year?
Second year. This is my second year, and I'm going, going to my third year.
Going into my third year.
Third year, okay. Okay, back, we got the slides back.
So some students qualified for States in Boston, and this was actually my first time at States. So I gained a lot of really interesting experiences in like marketing and finance, and like, I was able to like make connections with like, like-minded students, like who like share the same ambition. I was able to like have conversations with like, various colleges were there, they were set up, so I was able to have conversations with like admission counselors from Babson, which was really cool, because Babson's a school that I'm really interested in. So it was a really unique experience, and I'm really thankful that we had the opportunity to go to States. And then.
If you go back.
Don't go back. Sorry.
The, uh, categories that they went to on the S E B.
I'm going forward.
Yep, go forward once.
Right there.
So all the people that competed, we had on, put these in, we had Quiz Bowl, which was a couple of students, uh, a compromise of two people, as well as two from another school that they randomly had to go with. Just, they walked in, they met them then and there, and they had to study and then go to work. And then we had the counting applications. Um, that was a role play where you're given a scenario, and then you have to go in and you have, you have fifteen minutes to respond, and then you sit down in front of somebody and you have to, you have a rebuttal. Okay? And then we had the startup business plan, that was Luke and Quinn. Uh, then we had community given, and that was what you saw with the, uh, 5K designed by Grace and Maddie. Then we had the franchise business plan, that was by, uh, our most recent president, Kevin. Um, and they made it all the way through States as well. And then we had financial consulting, which was on the topic of NIL scholar, NIL funding in college sports. So those are the topics covered. And then the last two slides now, when we go to ICDC, you can skip over those, because I talked about that. If you go back, there's some nice pictures in here, you can look at them another time, or however, that's posted up on YouTube, right? Um, they have some direct quotes from Luke and Quinn, that's what I kind of talked about a little bit. Go forward there. And then the next slide here, so then this is the Quavon Craft Fair.
Got it. All right, so this year, Quavon STECA held its first annual craft fair. And although there was a weather inclement, um, it was a lot of rain, but that didn't deter us, and it was a very successful event. We raised over two thousand dollars, and there was forty-three, um, vendors present, and I thought it went great. I saw a lot of great engagement, and I know that next year, it's gonna be even better now that we have a more dedicated, not, I'm not gonna say more dedicated, but now that we have a lot more time to plan it, I feel like it can be wildly more successful. We got a food truck there, I thought it was great. We have the dog father, and I think we could add a lot more to that too, because if we get it on a nice outside day, I could, I think we could easily fill the parking lot with vendors, food trucks, and we'll get a lot more positive engagement. I know this year we'll have a lot more advertisements towards it, and I think it'll just be the most successful thing that we've done to date.
Fantastic.
We're sold.
I'll get, I'll get it to you when we get it. Does anybody have any questions about the craft fair or anything that we've talked about?
Anyone? Just again, as Dr. Allen was talking about, the motivation, I should, I should maybe ask you a different question. What was your motivation to get into DECA?
See, when I came into high school, this was, um, I was introduced to Mr. Bergman through his class, and, um, I heard some things about DECA, so I thought it was a nice, interesting event. I wanted to, you know, I was an incoming freshman, I wanted to dip my toes into an event. I heard about DECA, I did my research, and I thought it was a wonderful, um, program to be a part of, and I've met great people like Grace, I've been involved with Mr. Bergman. I've had this opportunity to talk in front of y'all, it's been a wonderful experience. And every year, I find myself becoming more and more dedicated to the program and wanting to help other people to get dedicated the way I am now.
Listen to what he said.
And how he said it.
Yeah, that, yes, exactly, very well said, very well done.
Thank you, sir.
Your motivation.
So in my freshman year, trimester three, I took entrepreneurship. I remember I was the only freshman in that class, there's a bunch of seniors and juniors. So it was a little intimidating, but like as the class like went along, I started to like really start to like get interested in business and marketing and entrepreneurship. And yeah, Mr. Bergman like brought up the idea of like joining DECA, and I was not sure at first, but once I learned more about DECA and all the opportunities that it has to offer, like I really started to get interested, and I'm so glad I ended up joining, because this is awesome.
Again, well said.
Yeah, yeah, well said. And aside from your in, insight, the motivation and the learning, you even mentioned potential depths in college, which is a business school.
Yep.
Great network.
Exactly. You mentioned the relationships, that networking, and then not only the competition, but putting you in an environments that may be a little stressful, that you have to come up with a potential, uh, and, and, and outline of some sort. So fantastic. Anyone else?
I just wanted to thank you for inspiring students this way. It's, it's not always an easy thing to do when you clearly have a lot of passion for it, so thank you very much.
He's been a very positive change for the school, if I gotta add.
You may add.
Feels like you got a cap.
You got that one. Good, good. Once again, thank you, clarity, and.
I hope to see you again.
At the craft fair.
Craft fair, we need. Fantastic. Emma, anything to this? Ellie?
Ella.
Ella?
No, you're good.
I know, what's going on here? Ella?
Um, let's see, so I think next year, I'm gonna have, next year, we're gonna have Anna Metcalf join me as another school committee representative. So I'm really excited. She's also, um, Ms. Metcalf and the office daughter, she's one of my friends, and I think she'll be great. She's a, she's a dancer, um, she was a partner with me for Unified Track, and we have a lot of classes together, which is nice. So I'm excited, excited to have her. Um, let's see, what else? I don't know, school's really, pretty much winding down. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Ready?
Anything to report on like, in the school activities or things going on that you've heard about or have thoughts about?
I'm going whitewater rafting with Roxy, leaving tomorrow, so I'm very excited for that. Had a great fun last year.
Where are you going?
Um, Three Rivers, The Forks Main, and the rafting company is Three Rivers.
All right.
So I think it's Class Four Rapids, so we go, we stay overnight, and we go whitewater rafting, and then we get a meal of steak and lobster, which is pretty nice, and then we go.
That's a great place.
Yeah. The water will be flowing good with all the rain.
Well, it let whitewater out from the dam, right, Julie?
I guess a quick question, as we've been doing, the student representative, I know you had it in different ways over the years. How was your year, uh, this year? What did you think of the school committee, representation, the actions, your, uh, interactions, and opinions, and things that you brought to our attention?
Yeah, I think it's been good. Um, I brought a couple of things, attention, and I've obviously, you know, I've done presentations. That was really nice. It was also, it's just kind of nice to be involved and know what's going on. I think that's nice, and you know, sometimes I'll just like update people on school at what I've seen and stuff. And I also think it was good to go to, um, UMass Amherst. That event, that was really eye-opening, kind of gave me. That event, that was really eye opening. Kind of gave me more of a sense of how things work. That's been my year.
You know, and I and I'm glad because I know you were there along with all the students. It was fantastic. School committee members, administrators, parents, selectmen, select boy people and finance folks. And then when you walk into this and you see people talking to you and then you're like waiting to hear, when's what's the audience going to say? And then you and you know, and then you see the kind of the dichotomy that we have, have sometimes have to deal with with legislator and everything else to get through the whole day. And I think you had to leave like around three, two or three?
Yeah, it was a long day. We got through one panel. It wasn't even the drama. It was just like the reports and stuff.
Right, right. But no, no. Again, thank you for your participation and we look forward to your involvement next year.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a quick question? Ella, uh, I believe you served on the state advisory committee this year and you attended their meetings. So last year, I think, was that the first year we had Nick and Isabel? So they would often bring back to us what you guys were talking about at the state level. So uh we actually, um, Miss St. George and I were on a call today with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and we were talking about our new business and personal finance course. Um, and we said it was really our student representatives that pushed that course forward and they were so happy to hear that. But that was something they were really working on last year. What are the topics that you guys have kind of on your forefront right now?
So this year, um, what we worked on, I think we had three topics. And I think it would have been nicer if Desi had let us pick because the year prior, they let students pick and that's where that business, that personal finance.
Got it.
Because they let students pick. So in my opinion, this year was a little bit less impactful, but they were still important topics. We were given the topics of mental health, chronic absenteeism and school safety. So I was on the mental health group and let's see, we we mostly did research. This is the kind of thing when you don't get a topic that you, you know, have already have an idea. Um, but we did a lot of research and we also kind of noticed that the more students are involved in things, um, you know, the less chronic absenteeism, mental health, so the more programs that that students can find a place where they feel welcome and belong, the more likely they're to come here and be happier.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, and just a quick follow up and and Jess, is there anything else that you want me to?
You might, maybe we could take the hiking culture.
There's no objection?
That'd be great.
Evening, everybody. I'm Chris Haley, high school math teacher, hiking club advisor. You've seen me before. Um, I'm here tonight to ask permission for an overnight trip to the White Mountains, the uh weekend of October third through fifth, if this sounds familiar, because I was here a couple of months ago, maybe three months ago, to ask permission for a trip in May. I just looked back at my calendar. That was the eighth uh Saturday of rain, you know, in our current streak of thirteen that I think got the uh craft fair at some point too. But um, we, you know, we had a full complement of sixteen students and four chaperones ready to go, but there were literally flood warnings in the White Mountains. Um, you know, I was kind of agonizing on Thursday evening before we left. Um, four students had chosen to cancel on their own. But you know, at best case scenario, it would have been like a rainy day in our tents, which probably, you know, we we wanted it to be an enjoyable trip, not some diehard uh out there. So you know, we would have gone, but um, you know, they, I just felt the consensus was to cancel and I think it was the right decision. Um, I just want to say we were able to give everybody a full refund. Walmart took every single thing that I bought back, uh, which was like food and everything, um, which they just kind of eat that cost. So a lot of things I don't like about Walmart, but that's a pretty customer friendly policy. So anyways, that made me feel better. Um, so we would like to try again. Um, I'm an optimist, so I'm going to try to turn this into a positive. Uh, October is a much better time to hike uh than May is. So you know, it it's the um, it'll be, you know, foliage season, maybe not peak, uh, but it should be beautiful up there. You know, the water levels are generally lower that time of year. So it's essentially the same itinerary. We're going to try to leave school a little bit earlier just because the sun sets about two hours earlier and we just want to be able to set up our camp. You know, without the stress of darkness and that sort of thing. But um, you know, I'm opt, we won't have to worry about lingering snow on the summers, at least I hope not. Um, I don't think so. But we already have some students who had signed up for the um, May trip that have, you know, taken a permission slip for this one. So I just wanted to kind of get the ball rolling on that. It'll be hard to you know, organize everything if I waited until September to do that, so.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
With approval with the usual provisos.
Okay, second, second. Okay, any further discussion? And there's nobody online?
No.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? And abstentions unanimous.
Okay, thank you so much. Much appreciated.
Thank you. And get back on the agenda. Uh, the reorganization is the next item. I'll turn it over to the superintendent first.
So we'll open nominations for chair.
We have to open parliamentarian first.
Oh. I don't have to appoint myself, right?
We should do that last.
We should do that first because you start that and then it's switched because it gives her the right to, right? Because then you go to chair because.
Do that right now.
Yeah, you do the parliament.
Parliamentarian, Colleen Muha. Is there?
Motion, motion.
Okay, David and Dr. Allen, for the question comment? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstention. Unanimous.
So now you run it for chair until we nominate a new chair.
Got it. So any nominations for chair? Dr. Allen?
Mark.
Can you just, for the record, uh, state first name and last name, please?
Rofe.
Thank you.
Any other nominations for chair? Did I say hearing and seeing none?
And just all in favor.
All in favor of Mark Rofe for school committee chair. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Well.
Now you can give up your parliamentarian hat.
Oh, great, okay.
And again.
It's short and ripped.
Nominations for vice chair, uh, I nominate, uh, what? Dave Chamberlain?
Yep.
Second, second, Dave Chamberlain, uh, was Dave Deschamp. Any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing and hearing none. Um, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Uh, unanimous.
Congratulations.
Nominations for treasurer, Ryan Malu. Am I saying it right?
May you.
May you. Any other comment on that, uh, that you want to say before we move forward?
He's been excellent. He's done two complete years, so I recommend him.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
On Ryan Malu.
Second.
Uh, Dr. Allen and seconded by Dave Deschamp. Um, any comments? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? And abstentions unanimous. Uh, assistant treasurer, appointment of assistant treasurer, Carrie Metcalf. Any comment there?
Carrie works on our central office team. She's been absolutely great and.
Yes, I mean, she really only has to be um available to, if we want to cut a check at the last minute, an actual live check, she is, she actually is the one who signs it. And um, we are going to get her more involved next year because um, to do bank transfers, if Ryan takes a vacation out of the country, she's going to have to be able, where we do weekly payrolls, you have to have somebody every week to be able to do the transfers. So she's going to meet with him to to um be more familiar with that this year. So I think when we hired her two years ago, it was a, it was going to be a stipend every time she had to step in to be assistant treasurer, but to date we actually have not paid this, paid her a stipend. So if if we use her more this year, we'll have to consider that.
Great. Uh, is there a motion to appoint the assistant treasurer, Carrie Metcalf?
So will.
Second, I think Dave Deschamp. Uh, any further comment, question? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstention unanimous. Appointment of executive assistant.
So.
Jessica Benefit.
Or benefit, whatever.
We benefited very well. An enthusiastic second. And. And is there uh any other further question or comment? Seeing and hearing none. Uh, all in favor? Opposed? Abstention unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Uh, consent, consent calendar. We have, I've been saying, they are, it'll be a one vote. It's approval of minutes. In the drive from May eighth. So if there's any potential, if there, if there needs to be a pullout of that, if there's any question or comment that has to be addressed. If there's no that, the other is the presentation of warrants, uh, which will be based to give us. Are you going to give us anything or do we need any?
They're in the directors.
Okay, so that we could touch the presentation, the warranty. And then acceptance of donations, we grouped it at five hundred dollars from the Tucker family from that N J R two C lock-in. One thousand five hundred dollars from Quabin Youth Basketball League for shooting machine. Fantastic. And a fifteen hundred dollars from E P Wine for a shooting machine as well.
It's a it's the gun, the shooting gun, they call it. I'm sure you've seen it in the gym where the, I think the balls come out and they do layups and stuff with them. It's like an automatic kind of.
Ball goes in, it gets shot back.
Yeah.
A rebounder?
So not really rebounder, but it's called the gun is what it's called.
You know, Principal Cook probably knows exactly what it is. He's a big basketball player, but uh
Okay.
We'll use our imagination.
Is there a motion on the consent agenda for all three items? Dr. Allen and Dave Deschamp seconded. Um, any further quick question, comment? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? And abstentions unanimous. Uh, administrative reports.
So in your packet, you have our director's report for this month and uh we featured our class of twenty twenty five on the first page. So thank you to everyone who came to awards night, to the graduation ceremony. While the weather didn't cooperate, I think that the kids and families absolutely had a great time. It was warm, um, but I think we made the best of the circumstances and I, you know, there are so many people that helped prepare for those evenings. It's a tremendous amount of work, especially for the building grounds and facilities crew, the tech crew. For the first time ever, we actually livestreamed the event. We had, at this point, we've had over a thousand views of the graduation ceremony. Um, so that's really great. And I heard a lot, I got a lot of feedback from families, how nice it was, um, both for them to be able to send some family members to the auditorium because it was more comfortable. They said the sound was great. Did any of you have family that viewed it in the auditorium? But they said the sound was great, the video was great and same thing from home and you know, for uh, many families shared that their grandparents and whatnot, they were able to sort of keep them home and comfortable um, and could really get some good footage of the ceremony. So yeah, so that's really great. Uh, huge shout out to our tech team. And uh you know, they feel like they've got it down. So we actually rented a camera to to do it and Andrew shared the other day, he's like, I don't even think we have, we need that camera. We've got the system down. We've got it all figured out. Um, and we believe whether it happens inside or outside, for any event that we want to do this again, we'll be able to do that. So that's a really, um, I I just think it's really nice because people can see it so quickly. Today, we also released the graduation photos. So we have a district photographer who um has been with us throughout the year. And so what she does is she offered up all of the sort of candid and live shots to families for free downloads. And she's charging a very nominal fee. I think it's five dollars if you want a more formal picture of your graduate with the diploma. So she had a great time doing it. She thanked me after and I don't know if you saw her there, but she was running tirelessly. That was like a a lot of work and then she turned the pictures around very quickly. So we feel like that's a real benefit that we can offer to our students and our families. So hopefully they'll enjoy that. I did um forget to say the words that I was certifying the graduating class. Um, so I have it here tonight to let you all know. Yes, so. Yeah, um, so I apologize for that. We will actually put it in the agenda next year because um it slipped right by me. But all of our students have met forth all of their graduation requirements, including our new competency determination. So you remember, we changed that this year. So we're, we're all set there. Um, yep, sorry about that.
To take back.
No. They're all good. I, we'd have a hard time getting them all back in, I think. But anyway, so the other things in my section of the report are just many of the celebrations that are happening right now. So we put in all those dates. We had a really nice junior award um ceremony. I think it was Monday in the afternoon. They invite juniors who are receiving book awards and um potential scholarships and recognition to the event in their families. I think we had about twenty four students receive awards. Um, and some of those were as valuable as like the Rensselaer medal, which could be up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars if a student decides to attend Rensselaer and gets accepted there. So that was really nice. Our eighth grade recognition, our eighth grade award breakfast is the Saturday morning and recognition night is Wednesday. All of our fifth grade recognitions are happening on the twentieth. Our big concert, um, school-wide district concert of all of our students was today. And our eighth grade civic showcase, this is sort of the mini version of the P E A projects, um, will be held on, oh, I didn't put the date there, but I'm pretty sure it is the twentieth. Um, so I apologize about that.
Give me one second, I can look it up.
Thank you. We did do a trial run. So next year, we're going to be serving lunches on the half days of school. And so we did our first trial run this past Wednesday. And so I'm going to actually reach out to the administrators that are present and ask them how that went. We did a couple of different versions. Most of our schools did sort of like a take and go type of meal. Um, Oakham Center School did serve their students because we wanted to see how how that went. So Emily, I see you there. Can you tell us a little bit how lunch went on the half day?
Yes, it seemed to go very smoothly. Um, the teachers put in the order in the morning and then we called the kids down about five minutes before dismissal. They went, picked them up. They put them right in their backpacks, got on the buses and left. And I have not received any feedback from bus drivers that people were eating on the bus, which we reminded the kids that morning and we had the teachers remind them again and the bus drivers reminded them as they got on the bus.
Great, thank you. Uh, so that's very similar to what we did during COVID when the students were on the hybrid schedule and they were taking their lunches home with them. So we feel like it's familiar to them. Um, and we're also running a summer feeding program over the summer. Olivia's been advertising that. She'll be putting up like those sandwich boards in all of our town. So people know they can come to the middle high school to receive free meals for the kids that are eighteen and under.
Colleen, I'm here too. I just can't get my camera on.
Okay.
Um, so at Hubbardston, we had a hundred and one students receive a lunch.
Wow.
Um, yep, that was more than anticipated, but it went really smoothly. Um, I didn't get any reports about eating on the bus either. Um, and I think teachers maybe are a little relieved to know that it went that smoothly because we're going to get it up and running next year.
That's great. So, and I just want to give Olivia, um, she just got married, so goad in a huge shout out because we we really have talked about doing lunches on half days for a long time. And Olivia has a very um flexible and approachable mindset about different ways, as long as we're getting food to our kids, that's the most important thing. Um, and so she's really worked with the principals and the principals have been great, just sort of like how's this going to work for our school, given the number of students and the time of dismissal? So that's terrific. Um, the other things that I have in my. The other things that I have in my section is just a reminder that we have passed our budget in three of our towns. We did Hardwick on Saturday. And the two towns that we have left are both Oakham and Berry. They're on the same night. I, um, we're hoping for a really good turnout at both of those meetings. We know that the, the budget is definitely, it's, while it's challenging for all of our towns, these are two of the towns that are kind of feeling it a little bit more. We were supposed to have our last regional agreement workshop this Wednesday, but our legal counsel is not available and he has not yet received the feedback from Desi. So we are planning that in a couple of weeks. We're just waiting to get some dates from him. And I believe you all received a, an email from me to let you know that our Quavon Regional Middle High School principal has resigned. And I just wanted to let you know the next steps and also to get some feedback from you. So in your packet, there's a survey that I would love if you feel inclined to fill out. And we're going to be doing focus groups. We have a focus group scheduled with our staff next week. And then I will be doing, I'm going to try a survey with the students. I'm just worried I won't get a very good crowd if we try and do a focus group with them at this point. But we'll do a survey for our students, grades six to 12. And then I will offer parents a survey and a focus group as well. So the position posted today, we'll gather our feedback and then we'll begin our interview process. Which could, you know, conceivably, because the position posted today, there are already applicants. It could start as early as the week of the 23rd. So. That's what I have.
Dr. Allen?
Yeah. You don't need us to hire the principal, do you?
No.
I was going to suggest that maybe conferring with the chairman and vice chairman, as you do that, would make me as a committee member feel better.
Sure.
And I would suspect my, my fellow committee members, if you don't mind.
Not a problem.
Okay, I mean, just, just for input.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do, we can work with. You're absolutely right. When you add reform law, superintendent has the right to hire her people, his or her administrators. But absolutely, as a feedback or as a helpful to be available?
Of course.
You know?
Yep.
But. Thank you. It's in your, it's in your bailiwick.
Great. We will have a full search team, obviously, of teachers and whatnot. So that'll be great.
That's a good point. Good communication, because as we speak and continue to learn, and I appreciate school committee members as we've learned. We are, and even though we don't overpower, it's nice that the superintendent direction and listen to us and the guidance that we work with all year round.
Yeah, I have to say the letters that we received is probably the most literate and eloquent I've seen in a long. It's interesting, I was thinking the previous principal we had, who was literate and eloquent like that, was probably Maureen LaCroix. And I read in the Barry Gazette today that she was appointed principal of the high school 38 years ago.
Oh, by the school committee in those days.
I remember it well.
Yeah.
But that letter, I thought, particularly the quotes and all, just very well done.
Very good.
Yep.
Um, any, any questions?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
For, for the superintendent's piece on that, before we move on. I just want to make one comment. I was going to hold it to. What a great speech that you presented and a different twist that came in. And then Crystal, right behind, of the words of wisdom were phenomenal. Just wanted to say that you set it up pretty hard. You know, walk up. And I loved your response. No, genuine, but it was so great. So that was a different, powerful. And wasn't it nice seeing 102, I think it was 102, 102 students following your lead?
Hmm. My personal goal this year has been to know something about all of our graduates, and so they know that. So we've been having a lot of time together. And so I really wanted whatever I said to be a true reflection of them as students and as a class. So hopefully that's what they took away from it. You know, the cheap glasses were an added bonus, right? But Crystal, your speech was like so aligned with the theme. It was amazing that we didn't know that ahead of time.
Yeah, that was, I don't remember who, what student it was that said it first. It was, I was like, oh my gosh, thank you.
And I make sure I brush my teeth.
Yeah. Kids in lockers. But that was great, too. Yeah, and I mean, again, I thank all of the, the principals because they, you know, went to their kids and got the, the advice. And then nothing worked out the way in my schedule that I thought it was going to be. So I was originally going to go pick up all of this stuff and then I wasn't able to do that. And then they put it into Google Docs and Word Docs for me. So I was really appreciative.
Good.
Yeah.
Thanks, Superintendent.
Okay. Yep, shall we, you're up, if you have anything to share?
Um, I think Colleen went over some of the things that were in my report and so did some of the kids and Trisha's presentation. So I'll just kind of focus on some of the other things. Rotsey led the middle high school students in a Memorial Day assembly, as did many of the elementary schools. And then this past week, um, we had a Project Lead the Way showcase for some of our students at the, at the high, not high school. The students' projects were really creative. They invited superintendent and other staff to come in and really kind of to just kind of look at their projects and evaluate them. Were able to ask them questions about their projects. They were all able to elaborate on what they had done, their problem of practice, the materials that they had to use, some of the complications that came with their prototypes that they created and what they had to do to make modifications. They were really excited about their projects. And they had some really creative ideas. Some of the things that they came up with were either a headband or an armband that people could use when they're out walking at night or running. So that other cars or people could see that they're there. And their lights on their headbands or armbands would either flash to be solid or they would flash. There was a dog food dispenser, also medication dispenser. And then if you look in the picture that's in there, there was one team that had worked on a project for actually a couple of weeks. I was like, you guys did this in three days? Because it was four different kind of structures and they put them all together to work alongside with each other. So basically, they had to pick up a cube. The cube had to hand it off to one of the other machines that put that on a.
Conveyor type of thing.
Conveyor. And it had to determine if it was like a a cube with color or without color. Depending on that, it would categorize it into the box that it had to go in. So it was really pretty impressive to watch all of the work that they did. They were very proud of that. Uh, in regards to the high school, planning for credit recovery is underway. So we are hiring teachers for that and getting that ready for summer. And the elementary school. We did kindergarten training in all of our schools. So all of our incoming kindergarteners are going to be ready to go. Uh, grade five students traveled to go see a WUSAP game. Many of the elementary schools and different grades are taking field trips at this time. And then we recently just completed our curriculum training in Open Sied and investigating history for, Open Sied was grades four and five, and the teachers that are piloting, going to be piloting in grades K through three next year. And then investigating history was just grade five, but when I was meeting with the teacher leaders this week, they actually had asked if the grade three and four teachers have some interest, would they be able to get some training and be able to implement it? So it was nice to hear that there was a little bit more interest. And so I'm just going to reach out to the teachers to see who is interested in that and so that we could get them the training so they can be ready for next year as well. And then other than that, we're planning for STEM and literacy camp for the summer for the level in grade five.
Um, I just want to say, there is actually a mistake in here, too, because Hubbardston grade five students did not get an opportunity to go to WUSAP's game.
I apologize.
They are actually, um, I know my daughter and a couple of other kids are very disappointed because their field trip is walking to the town ruckfield that most of them do all the time. So I feel some very disappointed kids in Hubbardston that did not get that opportunity that some of their older siblings got to do in their years as well. So.
Congratulations. Thanks. As we continue to always improve and we need to hear those things make sense.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Quick thing, quick question on professional learning in the summer. How's that going to be rolled out for teachers, staff? And what is the potential theme? Or is that part of the summer leadership retreat that gets developed?
So I, I just started working on that with the coaches, looking at the teachers that are in their first three years or any teachers that are changing content for next year at grade level. Uh, there'll be three days of professional learning for those teachers. And based on who those teachers are and where they are in either year one, two, or three. And in what kind of, do they need ELA, math, science, social studies? That will dictate what courses or professional development we offer them. So we're in those stages right now, planning those days for them. So as soon as that's done, that will be pushed out to teachers to sign up.
And are you happy at this moment with the reading and literacy development throughout the district?
Yep. So yes, we did a lot of work this year on writing at the elementary level. And we're going to continue that and push that up to the middle high school for next year. So that's been going really well. I think that there's always room to look at our data and grow. So we've been looking at our intervention and really kind of thinking about how we can kind of push in and support our students based on the data that we have at each grade level.
Thank you.
Kevin?
We have a word of the contracts on the carpet replacement for the media center, which will be starting right after school gets out, as well as the replacements of classroom carpets at Quavon, Oakham, Hardwick and Hubbardston. Those projects will start right after July 4th, weekend lasts for about three weeks. The HVC project that we are going to be working on will start as soon as school gets out, which will ventilation added into the middle high school, which doesn't have any to allow for relieving the heat load that's in that section of the building on the second floor.
Will it help the gym?
And it will also add air conditioning to the auditorium as well. Uh, we're currently applying for a grant to get a new antenna system. It's a bidirectional antenna system for the middle high school, which will allow all the area towns, police and fire departments to be able to communicate once they're in the building. Currently, right now, the frequencies are all different. And when they actually enter the building, once they're about 30, 40 feet into the building, they don't have communications. So we're, we're working with a Motorola group right now. And we'll be issuing for the grant in the next week or so. And, um, we've worked with the area police departments in all the towns, but also the state police to figure out how to conform this so it works for everybody the best it can. So.
That grant's due the end of June, and we've been really collaborating with our local PD. Kevin's been in touch with some. I don't know who the last guy was that sent all your stuff, state, yeah, state police. So, um, we can make sure that whatever we're asking for is going to get us the most service possible. Maybe I'm not explaining that well, but.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Any questions? And Andrew's out there. I don't know if he has anything he wants to share about his report. No, they're getting geared up for Chromebook, collecting Chromebooks. That's always a busy thing at the end of the year.
Yeah, we're going to pull in about 2,000, over 2,000 devices this year between the staff and the students to reimage and clean up for, for over the summer. So that's our big project that starts next week and lasts through most of the summer.
That's a huge project to get them all back, refresh them and do what you have to do.
There's always surprises. Let me just say that.
Okay.
Stacy?
Okay, so we've been working to try to finalize our budget for FY25. Thanks to a lot of work by Joe. We're going to have over $800,000 left in special education classes this year that will drop to our E and D. Different programs, we price according to that. So, uh, we've been able to actually do some spending ahead because of that. And that's going to help next year's budget, which is going to be tight as it is. So we were kind of nervous about, we had cut supplies out of next year's budget. We had cut 50% of supplies. So we're able to buy some of those this year to get them ready for next year. We also did some transfers because we're, we're nervous about our school choice balance. So we were able also as a result of that to bring a couple of teachers back from school choice and charge them to general budget. So therefore, you know, here Mr. Wiggler, he's going to make a motion to do a budget transfer for those, the teachers we brought back out of choice. And we also, we haven't heard a final figure for FY26 of rural school aid. So I'm a little bit nervous about what we are hoping to get next year and what we're really going to get. So we looked at a lot of our expenditures this year to determine what's applicable use of rural school aids. We did a few transfers there. And with, because we were able to do that, it freed up a little bit of money for Kevin to buy some of the things that he's been needing, but was kind of put on the back burner. So I think everybody kind of benefited from our little shell game, as we were calling it. The schools got their supplies that were cut for next year. Not all of them, but a good portion. And we are hopefully bringing some teachers back from school choice to save our school choice funds. And other than that, I'm working on, I just started the FY25 audit with, I'm always going to say Powers and Sullivan, but it's called C-Biz this year with Craig Peacock. So I've been working with him to start what we call the preliminary audit, where they basically dump this, I dump the system and then they look at all our transactions and determine what they're actually going to focus on this summer for our audit. And then, um, we have a full evaluation of OPEB this year for FY25. So I can't thank Cheryl enough because she's been walking me through the different reports and so forth that I need to complete. Because basically I have to have that report done before the audit, auditors come here in the summer because then they get the, they get the report after I finish it first. So I've been working on that. And, and when the person we hired to be the assistant interim school business administrator called last night and said she's not taking the job. So we're back to square one.
So Stacy's still doing two jobs. Questions? Yes, Dr. Allen?
Yeah, ultimately, how much is our budget for next year?
2.9%. Yes.
No kidding?
2.9%.
Or did you guys do a good job?
Uh, I just have to give all of our team a huge shout out because we've really been so laser focused on our spending and it is hard work that we've gotten to the place. But we're, we want to think about, we'll see where we end, right? Because we have a few days left. But we've really been trying to think about. We use, we had dedicated 750,000 out of E and D and we only had 848,000 in there. And so we're hoping that our E and D will be a little bit higher this year. We're hoping that our school choice will be a little bit higher from all of these actions, just so it can set us up a little bit better for next year. So I just want to thank everyone for really, really honing in and, and, you know, saying what is necessary.
Do we have any educational school choice numbers?
Um, we did just accept the majority of our school choice students. We haven't since run that. I don't think.
I can pull it.
We, we certainly can. We can have it for the next meeting for you. We're still waiting on confirmation. So a lot of times parents will say, yes, they're coming, but we may not have received their paperwork yet, things like that.
I literally tonight got one, someone said they were coming and then they emailed me tonight and said their daughter changed her mind.
Yeah.
So.
It's a bit of a.
Look about the same, up a little, down. Look about the same, up a little, down a little.
I think it looks about the same. I think when we looked at some of the figures, I think it's about the same.
About how many people, the levers and then the gingers, that kind of thing, the amount of people that leave and then.
Right, I haven't done the full, the full count, but if you I'll be happy to do it and then I'll drop you guys an email. That's okay.
We'll run it for you. And and I remind you, because when we talk to Desi, they remind us of us this all the time, that, you know, the numbers are decreasing. So we, as soon as enrollment uh declines, it's declining everywhere. So there's just not as many students either that we're we're pulling from. So we will see where we're at. It feels like we're very close um to what we were, but I would prefer to to run it and get you a more solid number.
And that can, they can knock on the door too in the summer.
Yes.
If there's opening.
Sure. Yep.
I took a request today. So. Actually, I think the past week I've had three.
Exactly, until they say yes with everything you said they have.
And I have a lot of people who've said yes, but I haven't received any paperwork yet. So
We get it.
I have, I follow up with them sometimes two or three times before I get paperwork.
Every year, it's a couple of days before school and we're saying, people are still registering. I see Mr. Carlson behind the um corner over there and he can attest to that.
They tell you, we've been since March and they come in two days before school starts.
Yep. Jill, anything you want to say about your section?
Let's say, I think, but I'll highlight is we do have, uh, we've made some hires over the last couple of weeks for positions and, you know, I'm pretty excited about the hires that are going to be coming into our program. Uh, we did hire the alternative high school teacher. We hired the middle school therapeutic teacher. Both of those are new positions next year. Uh, we did just post a preschool position for a professional um in our full day preschool side that we really do need two pairs in there. Uh, the students that do tend to come in there, especially on the special ed side, tend to have hiring needs. So I think it's it's really necessary to have two. So we do have a coaching for um for that position. Uh, we have hired a speech language pathologist for next year. Um, we hired a speech language pathology assistant, which started this year. Um, we hired a one to one LPN for a student who needs an LPN. Um, we still have a vacancy for a speech pathologist um in a couple of one to one pairs that are still open. Um, E S Y, like, no lot of planning for E S Y. I am happy to say that this year we were able to fill our related service positions with FOB employees, uh, which is going to be a significant savings, probably in the ballpark of fifteen to twenty thousand dollar savings. So I'm pretty happy with that. Um, pretty grateful that they find an early to work over the summer. So.
Dr. Allen?
Yeah. How many kids do we have in this pre school and in the post? And how is that post going without grade?
The post grad program is flourishing. I mean, we have currently um nine students who are in there at this time. And then we actually have two students who graduated this year from out of district placements and are returning to the district to participate in the program. Um, they are out and about all the time. Um, so they're really not in the building very often, but Tricia has done a really nice job overseeing the program and supporting the students in the program and the teachers um as well. So I think it's it's been going very well. Um, are you talking about the preschool as a whole or the preschool in the brain tree?
In the brain tree.
Um, I don't want to make it during that program now as a full day program.
We have fifteen slots, so we we filled uh fifteen slots. And I believe all the peer model slots are full. Um, but we usually leave space for a few extra special education students because as they qualify throughout the year and they're appropriate for the program, then we need spots to be able to place them into. So it serves fifteen full day students.
Anything else? Thank you. And then again, with the hiring over the summer, um you'll have some needs um both in I need area.
I'm very optimistic. I try to always be optimistic.
Paris too?
Uh, yep. So for the Paris, we have a couple of openings, but you know, we've been having, we have Africans, I think.
Okay.
It's always that, yeah, this is.
Thank you.
And the last thing I just have to highlight is one of our post grad students. So Mr. Myville has uh photos on the back here of Chad Booth. So Chad is one of our um post grad students. He's also one of our unified athletes and he has made the unified team for the New England Revolution. He will play at Gillette Stadium on June twenty eighth. Anyone who might want to go and see him. And they have two games a year and their second game, I think, is in the Carolinas or somewhere. It's an away game, but this is a huge, like, I I can't even tell you. This is amazing that, you know, he had to try out. He's attended practices. And Mr. Myville was telling me that he would pass him like in the gym and he'd say, you know, I'm 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 going to be on the revs team, right? And Mr. Myville's like, yeah, cool, Chad. That's so great, right? And then his mother said, he made it. He actually did make it. So um he's one of the biggest cheerleaders. When you see him play for unified basketball, he is the kid who is making sure that everybody gets a turn with the ball, not just taking shots himself. Um, so it's my hope, maybe we can fill a van and go down and see him play, because I think it would be really awesome to have some Quavon representation for Chad.
What?
Soccer. Yep.
Good. So thank you, Superintendent. Yes, um, before I go to the subcommittee reports, uh, sending around the uh the subcommittee roster to sign up that we do annually. And I just want to say that the regional agreement um subcommittee that are originally a subcommittee, but we, the committee we formed to continue to give us recommendations and things stays intact. Uh, Deb, Dave, DeShaw, Crystal, Kelly, Walter, and Peggy. Until that work gets done and then we go to the next step. And then the Warren Subcommittee, we tend to have Dave as our person dedicated to doing that. Aside from that, feel free to sign up and I'll turn it over to uh budget.
Excuse me, uh, in your packet, as Stacy referred to, we have a document that highlights the numbers that I'm going to refer to in a motion to hopefully move us towards closing out this current budget year. A motion, transfer, it's a two part assault. Two requests, A and B. Transfer request A is to transfer one hundred six thousand, three hundred sixty six dollars and ninety five cents from special education transportation. Forty two thousand, seventy nine dollars and ten cents from special education instructional support. Fifty six thousand, five hundred and thirty four dollars and twenty eight cents from district administration and thirty thousand, three hundred and seventy three dollars and eighty cents from school choice and charter tuition assessment to cover two hundred and thirty five thousand, three hundred and fifty four dollars and four cents of instructional sales transferred from the school choice for lobby account in order to increase reserves in the lobby account to be used for the future budget plan. Second part of the motion is transfer request P to transfer eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty seven dollars and thirty two cents from school choice and charter tuition assessment to fifty one hundred dash fifty two fifty benefits to cover an additional FY twenty five.
So more.
Okay.
Second.
Any further questions? Mark? No one's on Zoom?
No, but it's it's money, so we need to do a roll call.
Yeah, it's my, okay. Roll call?
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. DeChamps?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. The Range?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Okay.
In 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 actual, this is what twenty six budget update, you heard the from uh Colleen that three of the five towns have actually approved. There were two towns to go. So it looks fairly positive. And the reason for that, I think, and you know, I'm from Hubbardston, usually, you know, there's a little bit of angst and I was spinning around the budget process. There were no questions. And I think if you if you really look at the reason for that, we went from a, we started roughly eight percent like preliminary budget. Found up with a two point nine percent increase. And uh a lot of it had to do with the transparency of the administration throughout throughout the budget process. Kept everybody in a loop as to really what was happening. I mean, micromanaging the budget as we talked about, right down to like uniforms got cut or one of the teams. If you're down to that level, people know that you're taking it seriously. So I guess I think it was a pretty positive year and hopefully uh next year we have the resources to uh maybe do some of the things that we.
Good. Um, while you're, while you're there on the budget, Subcommittee, we can go right to the new business. Uh, Mark, you did the budget transfer. So you did that. Um, can we?
Okay, there's also a motion to, which is something that we do basically every year. Motion to authorize the interim business manager to make transfers necessary to close the fiscal year twenty twenty five.
Oh, second. Beautiful. Uh, any further discussion? I can do a roll call on that. Do I have to do a roll call or can I just do a group? It's it's just more of an appointment.
I think I think we can just do.
Authorization.
Yeah, I just need to know, Dr. Allen, uh, made the motion, who seconded?
Me.
Dave.
Thank you. Yeah, it's not actual money that we're.
Okay, so uh any further questions? Seeing and hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? Extentions unanimous?
Second, um, the second item, the second, the second bullet. New business is the authorization to uh borrow in anticipation of funds for this coming year. Motion is authorize the Quavon Regional School District Treasurer, acting under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventy one and sixteen G, as amended by Chapter thirteen, Chapter four of the X of nineteen seventy two, and with the approval of this chairman of the district committee of the chairman of the district committee to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty five. And to issue a note or notes therefore payable within one year, and to renew any note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with General Law, Chapter forty, Chapter forty four, Section seventy.
Good. Motion?
So.
Second, Dave, okay. Any further question? No? All in favor? Opposed? Extentions unanimous. Thank you. And then Mark, uh, the remaining towns, Okam and Barry is on the twenty fourth. Okay.
I think both towns, I mean, I think Okam increased one point nine and one point nine five and uh.
Five point four?
Barry is um, it's going to be challenging in Barry. I talked to um Dr. Marshall today. So they're they're in tough financial straits. So they're very worried about, you know, passing the budget and what might happen. They have some things that they're going to put uh put forth a two and a half for. So just hoping that um we have a really good turnout and it goes well.
Yeah, but the question was how much?
Five point?
Oh, it's like six, just under six percent, I believe. Yeah.
What'd you say?
Under six.
Under six.
I think it's like five point.
So that was like five point four, but I.
Yeah.
Um, I think I think I think it helped though, right? I do. I never go on Facebook. I keep I always send something, you just send something on Facebook like encouraging folks to go to the town meetings. Okay, encouraging folks to go to the town meetings and take a hard look at the budget and and vote for education. So I I thought there was.
Yeah, I think, I hope the municipal meetings have helped. So we'll continue those next year for sure. And I'm open to any other thoughts around that, but we need to finish out strong. That's the message.
Good. Okay, um, the only report we have is collective bargaining. Uh, we'll be, we have.
We'll be dealing with that apples.
Yeah, tentative agreements have been uh ratified with both with the custodians and the office managers have ratified their contracts. So we'll be uh making a presentation during the executive session for your consideration and the idea that hopefully tonight we'll be able to ratify the contracts. Um. Any other, uh, no other committees at this moment? You know, just a quick update. I think it's in your report as well. Are the regional agreement meet uh, it's coming up?
It is not. It was coming up, um, but it's like coming in a little bit to the attorney had a conflict.
Okay.
So we looked in the week of, I think it was July seventh. We don't have a date yet.
Week of.
But um our last meeting was, went really well and we were able to get through all the entire agreement. And the attorney has sent it um onto Desi for their review and comments before we want to have one more review meeting in.
July.
For the towns at that time, hopefully. Um, but yeah, everything went well. Um, we were able to really kind of talk things out, reach agreements and kind of just cleaned up a lot of the language that was already really in there, just kind of made it laid it out a little differently and had the process make more sense in the steps. So um yeah, I'm happy that that went to the sufficient and went well.
Good. Um, no unfinished business? Public comment? Anyone? School committee concerns?
Just two things on my part. I will not be able to attend and it's not something probably that's like in, get up and speak. So maybe David and other people. Um, I will be out of town.
I'm going to be out of state.
I'll be out of state too on the twenty fourth.
I'll be at work.
You'll be at work. I'm just saying, I'm out of state. So I, you know, I don't know if I can zoom in and where I'm going to be, but I know that I will not be here. I wanted to share that with the committee and I know that hopefully I'll touch base with Lee if Dr. Allen is around. Um, I normally, sometimes I do get, go up there and speak and I will do that, but I will be out of town that day. Second, I just wanted to say thank you again to Deb and to Crystal, graduation. And I think you guys, I think you all understand my kind of sense of how I, how I work. It's not only a thank you for your belief in me as chairperson, but also um over the years, you know, people didn't share in graduation opportunities for for just a different time, different leadership and everything else. In that sense that Dave Marsh spoke a couple of years ago, a few years ago, he asked, he wanted to. And Deb has, when Lee's chair, he did those type of things. But, you know, Crystal, so we're on a long way around. If you'd like next year to be part of graduation, I'm looking to continue to to rotate and have other folks get involved that they'd like. I don't like passing out, but giving some words of wisdom and things like that. Dr. Allen?
Yeah, look at those lights. How come we're going to get kicked out of the yearbook?
I don't know why we're going to get kicked out of the yearbook and that happened years ago.
Yeah, for thirty five, forty years we were in.
You know? I don't know.
And then all of a sudden.
That happened when Dr. Marshall's reign, she chose to decided that we
I remember we were.
Committee didn't need to be in the yearbook.
I don't.
I didn't say, oh, I didn't, I didn't know that, but we
Hasn't.
We would have had this to say about that.
Well, we couldn't, well, well, we have the superintendent. We can air anytime and we, but um I remember when we got on in two thousand and seven, you're right, there used to be a a picture with uh
Yeah.
And then she.
In the middle, everybody around.
He chose not to have that done. That was way back when she was superintendent.
Mark, you remember that, right?
Meet to it, took us a while.
See, Mark does remember. So Dr. Allen had a concern and he just brought a concern there. So we're, we will uh need to.
I didn't take it personally.
I'll tell you, the cost of space in a yearbook has changed tremendously over the years. I'm I'm not saying that's why it happened, but um we just decreased the number of pages because the books were getting unaffordable for the kids. So it's uh, yearbooks are costing upwards of seventy five dollars apiece now. They're very, very expensive.
And then we donate them, at least many of us, many of us, exactly, have been doing that for years because there are now there are students that can't afford things like that. And, you know, it's nice that they, that they have.
All right. Um, good. Any other concerns or accolades or anything else?
Seventh graders are coming back from Boston.
Exhausted.
Sounded like it was a good trip. I was texting messages and pictures all day.
I only got one picture and it was a self, my daughter took a selfie on the bus. I'm like.
I only got one picture and it was a self, my daughter took a selfie on the bus. I'm like.
Of all things to see.
Duck boats were a big hit.
We have some new business to go through. Then we'll go to executive session. We'll come out. Mr. Deschamps will then present and then we'll be able to vote on our remaining business to be done regarding. So the next item would be the trip to Costa Rica and Panama in the spring of twenty twenty-seven.
So this is a request from Assistant Principal Jason Gil Martin and Patty Stoltz. Last year, this is for twenty twenty-seven. This past spring, Mrs. Stoltz took six students on a trip. They're they're shooting to have a minimum of twelve students for that trip or they may not run the trip. So she really wants to get out ahead of this and start advertising with students now to see how many students they can round up for a trip to Costa Rica and Panama in the spring of twenty twenty-seven. She did send us some documents.
Actually, the documents I printed were from their trip in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
So.
Move with the usual provisos.
Okay, is there a second? Second? Any further comment? Question?
We don't have any information on the cost or anything yet.
Well, we'll ask them to come back with more of the itinerary and the cost. And I think that minimum twelve students is really important because as we do more and more of these trips, we're sort of splitting kids amongst our trips. And so I think we want to just be mindful. It gets really hard for parents. It's hard to say no sometimes. So we had said, you know, twelve students to to fill the trip and we'll see what happens with that. You remember, N J R T C is going this spring on their trip. So this will be the alternate year of that. The other request we have is for approval of the grade eight Washington DC trip. So this trip is going to run exactly as it has this past year. The cost went up for students because the hotel rooms had gone up and something else. But they anticipate that those costs may be reduced a little bit as they go back next year.
Move with the usual provisos.
Beautiful. Now we go to number two. Yep, second, that's inside, okay. And then the third request?
Well, the. Yep. The nature classroom.
Move with the usual provisos.
Nature's classroom, we got the dates?
I don't know if any of the elementary principals want to speak to those trips at all. They're all here. But it looks like Ocam Center School and Hardwick still plan to attend together.
Yeah.
They always go that last week in May. Hubbardston goes to Charlton location. They do a week in October. And I know Principal Carson, I think, is behind the corner over there, but they go to Yarmouthport the last week in May too. Is he there still? No? Oh, sorry. I, every once in a while he peek would peek out. So, yes.
So we got the all three motion moved along with the second. Are there any, along with the provisos, the legal proviso pieces? Is there any other further question, comment? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Extentions unanimous?
Yeah, I move, I was waiting for the, I mean, calling for the education collaborative and the caps.
And the caps. Second. Okay, we got the
Keystone.
Keystone and the Caps Collaborative. Okay, that's combined to appoint the superintendent, Colleen Muha, as the district representative. Moved and seconded by Dave. Okay, all, any further questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Extension unanimous? We have a request for executive session.
We'll be going to executive session.
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Meaning we'll come out in session.
I have to.
Second and roll call.
Yep, one moment, please. Dr. Allen? Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Larrange?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Okay, we'll go in executive session. We'll get from Mr. We're going to do that in public session when it comes out.
We're back in public session.
Yeah, so I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion. Well, let's get that. Are we back in session?
Why I can't get rid of that. I got rid of it. Yeah, but hang on one second.
I got the, I got the. And then Mark just opened the door, if you don't mind yourself. It's a public meeting. We're open. Okay, good evening. We're back in open session and turning it over to Mr. Deschamps. We're going to have regarding collective bargaining.
Yeah, I make a motion to ratify custodian maintenance contract to be in effect from July first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, so just a brief summary for the public record. The general objectives were to provide the salary schedule that will allow the custodian maintenance department to recruit and retain qualified, competent employees and to provide a salary package that is consistent with the current fiscal constraints of the district. As a matter of record, the these contract, this contract was negotiated two years ago. Language, language cleanup. The colas that were offered, that were offered are for the F Y twenty-six year, five percent. F Y twenty-seven, three percent. F Y twenty-eight, three percent. The shift differentials for second shift and third shift remain the same for F Y twenty-six and increase F Y twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And there was an addition to the to the contract that provides two thousand dollar stipend for any of the the maintenance of the the maintenance as a project engineers who have hoisting hydraulic licenses. The stipend is two thousand dollars per year and for a pesticide applicator license, two thousand dollars per year.
Any further questions? Roll call.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler? Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Larrange?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, are you ready, Jeff? Okay, I I move to ratify the office manager's tentative agreement to be to in effect from July first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight.
Second.
Dr. Brown, seconding, good.
For the record, the general objectives are to provide a salary schedule that will allow the district to recruit and retain qualified, competent employees and to provide a salary package that is consistent with the current fiscal constraints of the district. Again, these this these this contract was negotiated two years ago, the original one that's in effect requiring very little in the terms of language cleanup or adjustment. The salary, the the cola included in this tentative agreement is for F Y twenty-six, three percent. F Y twenty-seven, three percent. F Y twenty-eight, three percent. With some adjustments in the steps. And the compensation for education for an associate's degree is seven hundred dollars and for bachelor's degree, one thousand two hundred dollars.
Good. Any further question? Roll call?
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler? Mrs., Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Larrange?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Adjourned, seconded and adjourned.